Sit down there.
No, I like you, Dave.
We can have Jim sit there. You can move over. And you can sit here. We're ready.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the December 19th, 2006 meeting of the Glendale City Council being called order at 6:04 PM. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Menuchyan, Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Yusefian.
Here.
Mayor Weaver.
Here. Flag salute tonight was going to be led by Councilmember Menuchyan without it moves to MOQ. Oh, yeah.
Oh, and, and, yeah.
Flag salute by Councilmember Najarian and invocation by City Clerk Cardy. Sock, please stand.
Let's all rise and face the flag and put your hand over your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Glendale Character and Ethics Project word for December is compassion. This season marks, this season that we're in now marks the time of year when we must ignore our worldly possessions and focus on being kind, caring, and helpful towards others. Regardless of whether we celebrate Christmas, Hanukkah, or whatever holiday we observe during this season, we must always remember that peace and harmony are at the heart and soul of these holy days. Let us pray that the decisions that we make tonight on the last meeting of this year 2006 are made with compassion for all and malice towards none. We pray for peace and prosperity, and finally, we pray that this compassion is carried with us throughout this month and helps us usher in a new year so that we can continue working with kindness and caring towards all. Amen.
May we have your report?
The agenda for the December 19th, 2006 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, December 14, 2006, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
And just so everybody knows, my voice isn't what it should be, so I'm not going to talk that much, which will make some people in this city very happy. May with all of you Merry Christmas. Mr., Mr. Menuchyan already went homesick, and if you will notice, I've been asked to sit distant from my colleagues so they won't get infected with whatever somebody gave me. And you've got it too, right? So, we'll try to get through the evening quick. With that, what is next, please?
Next at 3:00 is presentations and appointments. At 3:00 is agenda preview for the meeting of January 9, 2007.
Ms. Agler.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. As the public is aware, the next meeting of the council, the Housing Authority, and the Redevelopment Agency is our January 9, 2007, because of the Christmas and New Year's holiday. On the January 9th agenda for the Redevelopment Agency, there are two items. One is a waiver for DRB and CUP process.
That's been postponed.
Okay. This guy should, I should caution him, but two weeks out, things could change, Mr. Mayor. Number, the other item would be the Alex Theater sound system for Stage Two. On the Housing Authority agenda, the Miraloma Housing Agreement, and there is a study session scheduled for DSP review authority and procedures. On the regular council agenda, there's a public hearing at 7:00 PM, intention to form the North San Fernando Road Corridor Landscape Maintenance District. In addition, the Director of Public Works has a number of items, including a number of award of bids for repair of storm-damaged fire roads, HVAC maintenance, maintenance of sidewalks and fixtures, a traffic signal at Wilson Avenue at Kenwood Street, and also a request for the conversion of five hourly workers to full-time employees. And lastly, the purchase of office replacement furniture for management services offices. The city attorney has a report scheduled, a decision on council extensions. The chief of police has one report currently scheduled, the use of police services. The city clerk has one item. It's a request for professional services for the April 3, 2007 election. The Director of Water and Power has a number of items, including cooling tower number one piping replacement project at Grayson Power Plant, an item regarding the 2007 revenue bonds, an item regarding utility easement number 2564, quick claim to East Broadway Venture. Number, the fourth item, a termination of the Chiquita landfill gas-to-energy project between SCPPA and the City of Glendale. And last, a chromium pilot study, Phase 3, to provide chromium removal information in agreement with McGuire, Malcolm, Herny Environmental Consultants. And last, a report from the Director of Information Services regarding the EdgeSoft contract.
Thank you. That's the night, eh?
It's long. There's quite a few items.
Welcome back to the council, eh?
You'll pay for your meetings.
Pay for the two missing meetings. So, do they might think we're going to be here next week or the following? No, no. Okay, what's next, please?
At 3:00, be a service award presentation to Office Services Secretary Dana Cordova for 25 years of service to the city.
This is the latest I've seen Dana here in my 10 years. Elaine?
Mayor and City Council, my name is Elaine Agler, and I'm here this evening honored to present Dana Cordova to you for her, where'd she go? It's the girl on me. For her, I was going to be on this side, for her 25th year of service to the City of Glendale. Actually, her 25th year with the city was last month, November 2006. In addition to working for the city, Dana is also a resident of the City of Glendale. Her family moved here in 1963 when she was a very young girl, and Dana attended all of the local schools, John Muir Elementary School, Roosevelt Junior High School, and a graduate of Glendale High. Her entire career has been in the public sector, believe it or not. Before coming to Glendale in 1981, Dana worked for the Glendale Community College from 1978 to 1981. So altogether, she has 28 years of public service to the Glendale community. Dana started in 1981 in the City of Glendale as a clerk typist, 2 in the Glendale Water and Power Department, where she was a cashier at the drive-up window. She was later promoted in 1987 to Office Services Assistant 2, and from 1987 to 92, she worked still for GWP in the meter shop. In 1992, Dana came over to City Hall, and she spent half of her time, 50% in the city clerk's office and 50% in the city manager's office. Then in 1993, she was no longer split in half, and we were fortunate to have her come 100% to the city manager's office. In 2001, she was promoted to Office Services Secretary, a position she still holds today. Dana provides invaluable assistance, not only to the general public and other city departments, but she's also the primary administrative support for our entire department and also for four busy people in our office. She's also the Recording Secretary for the Commission on the Status of Women, ISIS, and a Royal Verdugo Cities, which means she attends these meetings, pays attention, takes the notes, prepares the notes, and prepares the minutes for official action by these three bodies. Dana is very good at what she does, and she's always receiving compliments, not just from other city employees, but also unsolicited comments from the general public who she assists. I just received one recently, and I just wanted to share it because it was so great. It says, "Dana, your assistant was phenomenal. She was so helpful, and her preparation made things easy for my team. I appreciated her hospitality." Just today, believe it or not, I received another compliment. This one was from another city employee who said, and I think it summarizes what Dana does for us. "Dana provides excellent and efficient service, always with a patient and cheerful attitude. I enjoy my interactions with her because she's very pleasant as well as competent. When I thank her, she states she's just doing her job. Sometimes it's nice to be recognized for doing one's job, doing it well, and doing it with a smile. So I wanted to be sure to let you know that I'm a very satisfied customer." On a personal note, Dana is actually a second-generation City of Glendale employee. Her mother, Rose Cordova, who lives out of the area, so she's not here this evening, was also employed by the City of Glendale in the Planning and the Finance Department. In addition, her brother Willie, recently retired after 30 years with Glendale Water and Power, and I think she has some family members in the back. In addition to her mother and brother, Dana has an older sister, Marion, and another brother, Michael. Oh, and another sister. She's a big family. She has five nieces and nephews, six great nephews, and one great niece. She's very close with her family. From I've heard, they all have the same fun personality as Dana, which must make their family get-togethers a real fun event. And last but not least, Dana is married to Angel, who I believe also was not able to join us this evening, but I'm sure he's watching on GTV6. The last bit is just a few fun things about Dana. She loves cats and birds, which is an interesting combination because she has both at the same time. She has a very creative side, likes working with her hands, and we really enjoy them. We're the recipient of one of her handmade greeting cards. And she also enjoys traveling. Two of her favorite places are Maui in Spain. In conclusion, if I were to describe Dana in three words, I'd describe her as creative, ingenious, and fun. As you know, Dana always makes the workday an enjoyable and fun place to be. Some of Dana's family's here this evening, but I know that the others are watching on GTV6, and they're also video streaming. I saw her speaking to one of her nieces to tell them how to log on to the City of Glendale's website to watch this live on video streaming. So at this time, I'd like to turn the microphone over to Dana to say a few words to her family.
Wait, I haven't read this yet.
Okay, after the mayor reads it, Dana.
Don't you need the order?
And just wanted to thank you for your 25 years of exemplary service to the City of Glendale. Now to Mr. Weaver.
I'll read this, Dana, and give it to you from a distance.
Okay. Well, I have it, too.
And as, I didn't give it to you.
No.
As is the custom, Mr. Starbird presents this. Your husband isn't here.
Uh-uh, he's at home.
Yeah, well.
I promise.
Starbird will bring that down.
Let's see her both hands while she promises. Oh, okay. She's not talking with her fingers.
This certificate is an expression of sincere appreciation for 25 years of loyal and faithful service. May the future bring you a full measure of those endowments which long service and devotion to duty so richly deserve. Besides Glendale High and loving Maui, we love cats.
Yes.
Talk about our cats all the time. And Dana, you're a great person to have in the office.
Thank you.
Have I ever seen her mad?
No.
No.
It's another one in our office.
(laughing).
Councilmembers can get mad, but we never see the staff get mad, that's for sure. So, bring this down from a distance. Mr. Starbird, you can have that.
I just want to add that Dana is the first line of assistants. I don't want to say defense, because we don't want to defend against anybody. We want to bring them in and solve their problems. And Dana gets to, in a short period of time, calm a caller or a walk-in resident down, find out what exactly he or she wants, and then decide how best to direct him to the appropriate city department. So that's not an easy job, Dana, and we appreciate it.
Yeah, you've been busy today, haven't you?
Yes, very busy today. Thank you, Mr. Najarian.
In case you're wondering why, we had the lottery drawing yesterday for 700 people for housing, and I guess the phone number that was up on the board was city manager's number. So everybody was calling to find out if they were one of the 700. So you and Ani were kept very busy today.
And Kelly.
And Kelly, thank you very much for doing that. Okay, say something. Say something.
Well, I have my brother, my oldest brother Willie, and his wife Dawn, and my other older brother, Michael, in the audience. They surprised me, and they're here, so that's really nice. Thank you. (applause). And a lot of family out streaming, so I just wanted to say hi, and also hi to Angel, who's at home. So that's it. Very nice.
Well, I'd like to.
Thank you.
Also make a comment. She is a very, very hard worker and a very calm worker, sitting there behind the counter, dealing with people on a regular basis, answering phones, typing. She's a busy person, but you're always a pleasure to be around, and hopefully you'll be around for many more years to come.
Another 25, right, Dana?
Another not. (laughing). Thank you very much. It's been really nice working with you.
Dana, go home and see Angel now. Go home and see Angel now.
Yes, I'll be home at dinner.
Thank you, Dana.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Next is a city council and staff comment.
I have a few. You have a few, Mr. Najarian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. During last week's presentation of our proposed licensing for cigarette retail sellers, there was a picture of someone in those depicted in the graphics of selling to a minor. And that individual wanted me to make sure that he was not selling to anyone. He was posing and giving assistance to Glendale Adventist Medical Center and the folks from the city that were trying to promote and provide information regarding this. His name is Jack Kishian. He is the owner of Palace Liquors on Verdugo, and he assured me he would never, ever attempt to sell cigarettes to a minor. I guess someone looking closely at the photograph could identify him, and I can vouch for Jack. He's a good guy, and he was merely helping out in the promotion of this informational item that we hope becomes the ordinance. That's my first item. My second item, perhaps last week or two weeks before, and it's, I guess, a comment directed to our city attorney, there was quite a few people that needed the assistance of an interpreter, and we were figuring out how much time to give them, and I chimed in and said, "Well, at the MTA, we give double the amount of time for interpreted testimony, interpreted comments." And that was just my understanding and perhaps what I thought was the right thing to do. And I think I imposed that on the mayor and.
Well, you're an attorney, so I listen to you.
The rest of the council. So, I know you're coming back to us with some information on the mechanics of running the meeting. If you could please include that, as well as the necessity to provide interpreters. I know we had imposed on various people, our city clerk, and we were pulling folks from the audience. If notified in advance of a need for an interpreter, do we have the obligation to provide that? And besides foreign language interpretation, let's take that one step further for the ADA issues of those who need a sign language interpreter. And if you could address those issues in your report to us, that would be nice.
Actually, the former, I will address. The latter has actually already been addressed. If you look at your agenda, the header at the top actually talks about sign language translation for those who may be hearing impaired or have other impairments that require that. On the header, it actually talks about the time needed to notify the city clerk, and we will provide that service. But certainly on the issue of whether interpretation is required for individuals, to assist individuals who speak before the council, we'll address that, and also address some options on the amount of time that you, as a council, would like to provide individuals.
And if there's no applicable statute or case law, if you could give us an example of how some of the other cities and jurisdictions handle that.
We will.
I think that would be good for the entire council to have some input on. Thank you.
That's it? Few, too. Well, I'll just say one thing, since we won't be back the next year, everybody should try to watch the rose float parade this year, Pasadena Tournament of Roses Parade. I think we're number 72 and a little over halfway back, and the float is coming out beautiful. Don't know whether I get a award, but it is absolutely beautiful. I'm surprised that it's coming out so well. We're getting an awful lot of comments already, or compliments. So, try to then watch the parade and then watch USC beat Michigan. Okay, ah, somebody out there's a Trojan. Okay, what's next, please?
Five is consent items, including minutes of following our routine and may be acted upon. I want motion, any member of the council or audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before motion is proposed.
We have to pull 5B. Is there a motion on the reunion or must be accepted?
Move, consent, with the exception of 5B.
Second. Mr. Howard.
Mr. Yusefian, on the minutes of the regular council meeting under 5A, I believe you were absent. A joint meeting shows that you were present.
Right. I'll abstain on that one, but I'll move the rest.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmembers Menuchyan, Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Yusefian.
Hi.
Mayor Weaver.
Hi.
Abstain on the meetings.
Please read 5B into the record.
5B is Fire Chief Regarding Fiscal Year 2006 State Homeland Security Grant Program. 5B1 Resolution Appropriating $485,360. That is all.
Dr. Richard Spiritu, 2 minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council, staff, and the audience. I am Dr. Richard Spiritu, and I wish, to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year from me and my family. I'm playing the role of a Dr. Jekyll and a Hyde today because I like to commend Mr. Jim Frawley, who's sitting back there, and his staff for doing an outstanding job in putting this proposal grant together. I also want to thank him very highly for taking into consideration my suggestion regarding the striker chairs. This is one of the items that happens to exceed the guidelines for the Americans with Disability Act. That's item number seven. And what I'd like to do, Mr. Kasakian, would you give this to the members of the city council and staff regarding the papers that I gave to Mr. Jim Frawley regarding the striker chairs? I thank him for doing that. I also want to thank him for putting together the little MASH units that are going to be purchased through this thing, through the federal grant. And I kind of was wondering, what the heck was the MASH grant unit going to be used for? But then, after having breakfast with him this morning, I find out what it was going to be used for. So I want to commend him and his staff for doing this, and I would also like to have him seriously consider working with the other cities to jointly pool their resources so that we could have these programs together. Mr. Starbird, did you get a copy of one of those?
I haven't.
I'll make sure that he has one. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Is there a motion on 5B?
5B, second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Menuchyan, Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Yusefian.
Hi.
Mayor Weaver.
Hi. What's next, please?
Six is oral communication. Discussion is limited to items not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
First speaker, Dr. Laurel Bear. It happens to be our float is our bear essentials, and the song is "The Bear Necessities."
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. My name is Dr. Laurel Bear, and I hold an executive management level position as a director with the Unified School District, a district that services 22,000 students and employs more than 1,500 employees. And I am fully responsible in sharing, administrating, and defending compliant due process hearings for the district. So as I speak with you this evening, I believe that I do so with the full understanding of the complexity of running a due process hearing. Unlike the city's civil service process, which apparently is indefinite and ruling on a decision at the discretion of the city management or the Civil Service Commission Hearing Officer, most due process proceedings require that a decision be rendered within a specified number of days following the conclusion of a due process proceeding. In the matter involving the appeal and the demotion of the deputy building official, as noted on the commission agenda dated February 22, 2006, inasmuch as that matter was not posted on the commission agenda dated December 13, 2006, no decision has been ruled upon. Therefore, the earliest this decision can be ruled upon is January 10, 2007, at which time it will be 330 days since the employee filed with the commission, appealing the city's decision. This does not include the additional 360 days that the former deputy building official was placed on paid administrative leave from the city by Mr. Zern, the Director of Public Works. According to the Civil Service Regulations, Mr. Zern, with the approval of Mr. Starbird, the city manager, determined that the deputy building official was a threat to either the general public or other employees. This decision had to be reviewed and approved every 30 days with final authority by Mr. Starbird, the city manager. The placement of employees on paid administrative leave by Mr. Zern and approved by Mr. Starbird related to this case has cost the taxpayers of Glendale a quarter of a million dollars. In addition, the city was asked at the August 15, 2006 city council meeting by Mr. Zern to add an additional $800,000 to cover the work of the employees placed on paid administrative leave. The cost thus far to the city has exceeded an estimated $2 million. During the open public hearing chaired by Mr. Gantis, this entire matter began with an anonymous complaint by a disgruntled employee. An investigation was conducted by a probationary investigator, Nancy Horgan, at the city auditor's office. Her work, i.e. the report, which was heavily relied upon by the city to substantiate the preponderance of evidence, was continuously criticized during the hearing because of the inaccuracies, misrepresentation of facts, and misleading statements. If my school district used reports of this quality to justify our actions, the state would proceed with an immediately, immediate quality review with a potential takeover in order to question the qualifications of my district managers with respects to these types of responsibilities. I am asking you and speaking to you tonight, city council members, as the elected watchdogs for the citizens of Glendale so that you can investigate how this could happen in the City of Glendale. It appalled me to hear in testimony that Mr. Zern composed a Skelly letter and ordered a subordinate manager to sign and present it to the former deputy building official, and then suggested that the former deputy building official appeal back to Mr. Zern as a non-bias hearing officer. It further appalled me that Mr. Zern does not read the evaluations of the managers of his own division, as stated in his testimony. Instead, he has his staff stamp and initial the evaluations on his own behalf, and this person, in his capacity as Director of Public Works, holds the qualifications to evaluate other managers? It was disturbing for me to hear that Mr. Zern would take his actions without any interaction or conversation with the affected employees or their supervisors. It appears that he was abusing his appointed authority in rendering a unilateral decision. After declaring this employee a threat for 12 straight months, treating him as guilty until he proved his innocence, and attacking his professional reputation, what new information was discovered allowing him to return back to the workplace? According to the testimony of both Mr. McFaul, Assistant City Manager, and Mr. Zern, they spent 360 days delaying any further action regarding this matter, and only met with the former deputy building official a total of less than eight hours, and then ordered him back to work. The entire process for the deputy building official is a travesty and should not happen in the City of Glendale to any employee, and should not be the financial burden of the taxpayer. I challenge you to be upfront and further investigate this matter so that the taxpayers of the City of Glendale are not strapped with the financial responsibilities of upper management and their mistakes in the future. The abuse of authority, as demonstrated by upper management as it relates to this matter, must be investigated. I stand before you because the current administrative process has the potential to be abused, such as was demonstrated in the action of the former deputy building official. As the process now stands, the city has complete power to destroy an employee's career and reputation, regardless of their innocence and regardless of the ruling of the case, as it has with the former deputy building official. As demonstrated by the city's action against the former deputy building official, the system currently has wasted time and money for almost two years and close to $2 million attacking an employee that was described in the city attorney's opening statement as, quote, "a valued employee." The abuse of power that these upper managers have asserted is unconscionable and requires immediate review and action. Thank you.
Thank you. You've made an awful lot of charges that will be addressed tonight, other than Mr. Howard.
Mayor, this individual actually spoke at the Civil Service Commission meeting last Wednesday. I was present for another matter, and literally word for word, the speech was very similar. Currently, a relative of hers, and I'm speculating, but I believe it may be even her husband, is undergoing a disciplinary hearing before the Civil Service Commission. I am greatly concerned that individuals who use this forum in a public session are, hopefully, not attempting to influence the outcome of that decision by making those statements and those charges either here or before the Civil Service Commission. Issues involving process, issues involving the procedure, will be reviewed by the Civil Service Commission. I believe Commissioner Hattkarin indicated they will be taking those issues up because a number of those issues are important. Certainly, the amount of time someone is on leave with pay is a concern, as well as some others. But I'm very hopeful and trusting that the statements made here tonight are not intended to try to influence the outcome of that decision. That would be wholly improper. I think this individual, who claims to have a knowledge of due process and works within that system, would not do such a thing.
Thank you. Next speaker, Dr. Richard Spiritu. Mr. Yusefian.
Has the young lady mentioned the fact that the hearing has been concluded? Has the hearing been concluded and decision been rendered yet?
The decision has not been rendered. I believe the testimony has been concluded.
Are we within our processes guideline? Are we within our processes guideline as far as the time that is allowed to render a decision?
There is no specific timeframe for when a decision has to be rendered. I will say that our office, many years ago, has actually talked to the Civil Service Commission about trying to control these hearings, but sometimes they take longer than others, particularly where you have more than one hearing officer. The Civil Service Commission will be taking that issue up as well.
And who writes the decision?
The decision is actually prepared at the direction of the hearing officer. The advisor, I believe it's Mr. Potter, outside council, is preparing the actual findings and determination for review by the hearing officer, and ultimately, the entire commission. I believe that's the occurring, I believe that's the situation in this case. Mr. Potter has suffered an illness, and I know he's had some difficulty in writing the findings, but I don't know if it's in this case or another case.
I'd like not to get into this too much here tonight.
And that's one of the issues that I think a couple of the commissioners have come to me about, not about this case, but about the issue that Mr. Potter is under the weather and certain decisions are not being taken care of. So we may want, I mean, maybe your city can, I mean, the attorney's office can look into having somebody temporarily to deal with that issue.
I know the commission will be looking at it.
Wait, wait, wait. Now, this is starting to get out of hand. We're not supposed to be getting into debate here and exchanging information. I would like to move on with our communications. It'll be investigated. Dr. Richard Espirito, followed by Camille Levy. Levy, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, staff, and the audience. I am Dr. Richard Espirito. Last week, Mrs. Yasmin Beards made the comment that two-thirds of the Glendale Police Department has not had ADA sensitivity training. That's an interesting comment because that would require to fall back on our next first responders, namely, the fire department. That's what I'm here to talk about, is the fire department. After due diligence and requiring a number of hours of getting information, I basically have two sets of documents. One is an inner-office memorandum, and the other one is a Glendale incident report. On the inner-office memorandum, it says, "Dr. Richard Espirito expressed his concern of the lack of the ICD-9 codes." And they don't use the ICD-9 codes because they're not physicians. Under the incident code report, and, Mr. Kasakian, would you be kind enough to give copies to Mr. Howard's at City Council and to Mr. Starburg? Under the incident report, we have a very interesting situation here. Gynecological, obstetrical and gynecological incidents. I don't know a single fireman who's going to do a GYN exam on a female out in the middle of the field. There's also understroke the terminologies of CVA. CVA is a diagnosis for cardiovascular accident, better known as a stroke. There's also another major diagnosis here, which is syncope. Syncope is a very interesting diagnosis because basically what happens is the individual is suffering from a lack of blood to the brain, get dizzy, and they may faint or have other problems. They also have chest pains and a whole bunch of, and another one is GI bleeding. I don't know how a fireman, even a paramedic, medical emergency service fireman can make a determination of GI bleeding. Lot of times, in a doctor's office or even in a hospital, it's very difficult to determine the fact that there is GI bleeding, because GI bleeding can be internal. I would like very seriously to ask somebody on staff to answer the following questions. If you don't, I'll be more than happy to put it into a California Public Information Request Act. When I had breakfast with Mr. McFaul, I also found out a couple of other interesting things. Number one, I'd like to know what drugs they have on the emergency ambulances and also on all the fire trucks. Number two, who keeps an inventory control of those drugs? I don't know if you know what happens if you give an expired drug to a person when they need it. It usually loses its potency, and you probably can damn nearly kill them. If you give a case, give somebody nitroglycerin because you think they're having a heart attack, and I don't know how the paramedics are going to figure out if they have a heart attack or not, even though they put the term now in "heart attack," if you give a person with nitroglycerin that you think is having a heart attack, you could almost kill them. I'd also like to know who does the inventory control? How is this merchandise, both the IV solutions and medical drugs, purchased? And who does the inventory control? In the hospitals and emergency medical clinics are strict guidelines under the federal government for inventory control. I hope to God that this stuff isn't walking out the back door or falls into the hands of somebody who wants to kill somebody. I don't think we need another fire inspector causing problems here in the city of Glendale. I thank you very much for your time, and I hope each one, each and every member of the City Council and staff has an outstanding Christmas. Thank you very much, and God bless you both.
Espirito, since you're not going to get a response here tonight, I suggest you put in a public records request. I for one believe the fire department is maintaining all the records that you suggest, you know, could lead to something disastrous. I'm sure their record-keeping is very good, and you'll be informed of that. So make your request, please. Thank you. Camille Levy, followed by Ray Larson. Did I say it right?
You did.
Good.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, City staff. Thank you so much. I would like to introduce myself as Camille Levy, the Executive Director for Glendale Healthy Kids. Some of you may be aware that about 12 years ago, the city of Glendale, the school district, and the three hospitals came together to form a collaborative to address a community issue. Glendale Healthy Kids provides access to medical, dental, and mental health care for children who are low-income, underinsured in our community. We've served over 10,000 in those 12 years. One of our most stellar programs is the sponsorship of the USC Mobile Dental Clinic, which again will be here in Glendale, July 13 through the 20th, and we hope to serve at least 120 students with emergency and chronic and health care issues in terms of dental care. It is through the generosity of the city of Glendale that we can continue that program, and I'm here to say thank you very much. We really appreciate your support and your help in serving our children and building a healthy community. And I wish you all a most wonderful Christmas season. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming down. Ray Larson, followed by Barry Allen.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. I'm here on behalf of our fallen hero, Nicholas Steinbacher. I hope that everybody is aware of his passing in Iraq. And I'd like to see if the council has any ideas or plans for memorial. One suggestion I would like to see maybe is to, our upcoming Rose Parade float be dedicated in his name, and possibly, if we can, maybe a street named after him, or possibly a building. Myself, I'm a father of two Marine boys in the Corps right now. One has had a tour of Iraq, so I'm a bit partial on this notion here of being able to recognize our young folks that are over there in harm's way. I'm not aware of any public right now showing of this from the city gratitude to our troops. Some of the cities like Glendora, on their major boulevard, has a very nice set of banners naming each individual active service member they have, they're in the service, and it's quite a tribute. So, again, I'd like to see if the city can get proactive on this and see if we can show some support for our troops.
So just for your knowledge, if you go outside, unfortunately, we're putting in another wall in the memorial out here. We wish we didn't have to build another one, but there is one being added. And the rose float does have a symbol on, we use it every year now, called Operation Homefront, which you may be familiar with, which helps the families of our soldiers in Iraq. They're a national organization, and we pay tribute through that method on every rose float.
Good to hear.
Mr. Montero.
I missed the article, but someone told me that this young man had been killed in Iraq, and so I'd like to, what do we say?
Adjourn.
Adjourn, yeah. I'd like to adjourn the meeting in his honor, and it was Nicholas Steinbacher.
Steinbacher, that's true.
Yeah.
Yes.
And he went to school, I believe, in, they told me, Crescent Valley, or?
Yes. My son went to school with him since the first grade in the local Lacresne Elementary, Rosemont, and CV High School.
Well, if you can provide the spelling and maybe the parents' address, I believe we can then send a proclamation that we've adjourned the meeting in his honor and so forth.
Okay.
Mr. Starburg.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, it might be appropriate also, in addition to the memorial, to ask the Patriotism and Veterans Committee, who generally oversees memorial, if there's something more that we can be doing relative to the current Iraq conflict and soldiers who are serving and soldiers in this case who may give their lives there. Maybe there's something more immediate than the memorial that can be done that will be appropriate. We can ask them to give us some ideas on it as well.
Can you follow up on that?
Yeah.
Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Barry Allen, followed by Herbert Milano.
Mr. Mayor, Council, staff, and the public, I'm Barry Allen with Vanguard. Couple of odds and ends, and by the way, I would like to thank everyone who helped look for Roxy. Roxy has been recovered, so you can take the posters down. This is the fifth day of Hanukkah, or fifth night. It's the festival of lights. And when I think of lights, I think of a spotlight, I think of brightness, sunshine, transparency, and I think of that with relation to government. I think about the tools that we as the public have, very limited tools. We have campaign contribution disclosure forms, which sometimes contain the appropriate information, inaccurate information, frequently not. We have statements of economic interest that each elected official, certain employed staff members, management, and board members and commissioners are required to fill out, but as we know, they don't bother. And we also know that you check off a little box that says, "I have no reportable interest." That's it. There's nobody checking out on that. But then we have the California Public Records Act, one that, according to the city attorney's office, Vanguard has used almost 300 times this year. Now Vanguard is using that to be able to get information, and by the way, the city attorney has provided information which has disclosed the elements of fraud and corruption, and those have been turned over to appropriate investigative agencies. The information that we have been provided with is all right. We have worked with the city attorney's office earlier. We had one city employee who didn't want to give documents out unless there was a purpose for the documents, because she was afraid that they would go to an attorney, and the attorney would sue the city. And I called Mr. Scott Howard, our city attorney, and I guess that was taken care of. I don't know if there have been classes since that time, but it was a problem. And today, the city attorney's office wants to put a filter on that light. They're very upset because this is the most important thing. It's written in our Constitution of the state, it was Prop. 59 a few years ago, but the city attorney's office wants to turn that light off. They want to control it because this is upsetting. They're afraid they can't get the work done properly. Now, they have 10 days to comply with it. They have another 14 days if they can't get it done in 10 days, and it's something that Vanguard has never pursued with the city, even though occasionally those time limits haven't been met. We represent a number of people in the city who, they themselves, have a fear. They fear the government. Government should fear them. They fear the government because they're afraid the questions they ask may result in some sort of retaliation, just like the number of employees of the city that come to us. They're afraid of retaliation by their superiors. They shouldn't be. We know that. But by trying to dim the lights on our Public Record Act request, it's not the way to do it. We're familiar, you are familiar with Californians Aware, and the California First Amendment Coalition, and Common Cause, and Vanguard. We all stand together to represent the public, to take that fear away and transfer it to the government that wants to regulate us and wants to prohibit our attempts to get records. And as we look at this document that was provided to us, and I'm quite sure that the entire council has seen the document, if not, I know the city attorney's office can provide it, that we don't want to have to litigate it, but we will. And we want to make sure that information that we get for other people in the community is going to continue to be available under the statutes and constitution of the state of California. That cannot be taken away from us. And I think it's something that the attorney's office must recognize and does not want to litigate. I am Barry Allen for Vanguard, seeking accountability. Thank you.
Next speaker, Herbert Milano, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Mr. Mayor, want to respond to that, or?
Would you like to respond, Mr. Howard?
It's really up to the council. I think it's important perhaps to note that we stand shoulder to shoulder with Vanguard, Common Cause, the First Amendment Coalition, and others. The proper characterization of the letter that was sent to Mr. Allen noted the fact that he had made over 275 public records requests that were taking up a significant part of staff's time, not just the city attorney's office, but Public Works, the utility, fire department, police. The records requests are spread across the map, and it takes a significant amount of time to dig up those records and retrieve them, review them, take out matters that are covered by attorney-client privilege, that are covered by privacy and other interests, and then provide those records to him. We have not indicated that we are trying to swelter in any way, deprive Vanguard or anyone else of records. All we've noted is that because of the significant efforts, and it's beginning to interfere with staff's ability to perform their normal work, which is providing other services to the public, that we are just going to queue up those records requests, because we're receiving sometimes four or five in a day, and that we're just going to queue them up and finish one, and then finish the next one, and finish the next one. All those records requests will be complied with, but they have to be done under the rule of reason. We cannot continue to receive an onslaught of four to five records requests a day and respond to them. Mr. Allen's records requests essentially consume over 80% of all public records requests that we receive in the city, and it becomes a burdensome, overly burdensome, to the city attorney's office and to other staff. But we intend to and will comply with them. It'll just be a little slower, and they will be queued up.
Thank you. Mr. Milano, you have a card in for 6A2. There is no 6A.
That was the housing authority, sorry.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. You covered that earlier today. Good evening, Mayor Weaver, and members of the City Council. I wish you all a joyous and happy holidays. I want to, originally wanted to speak on another topic, but I think I needed to answer some questions with regard to the California Records Act. If I wanted to inquire information concerning crime statistics, for example, and I went into the city's website, I could not find it. But yet, if I go into another city's website, for example Burbank, I can get those crime statistics. If the city had core indicators available on the web, it's very likely that many of these California Record Act requests would not be necessary. So I suggest that you take a look at how other cities So I suggest that you take a look at how other cities' websites provide core performance indicators to this residence at large where you can see pretty much where they're going, what their plans are. So now that I digress, I go back to my original intent, which was to look at the, sometimes the disconcerting state of our sessions here. Our city clerk begins with an invocation, usually our words concerning empathy, usually our words concerning a communal feeling of the city council and the goals that you have for our residents. But what I find sometimes very odd is that within a few minutes of the invocation, that empathy disappears. It's gone. So as I look at these holidays, I want to recommend that we maybe, as we are reminded to be a little bit less self-serving, that we start looking at other individuals, that we take a look at other symbols in Glendale, similar to the symbols of the Christmas tree, for example. We have two of them. There are two vans in the city. One is a van that is a recreational vehicle. The other one is a van that serves as a mobile library. The recreation vehicle is a van that goes to areas of the city underserved by parks and it closes up two streets so that kids have an opportunity to play basketball and have, close proximity to them, a place for recreation. The very fact that we have a recreational van to service these underserved communities means that we're not serving our communities properly. The very fact that we have a mobile library means that there are parts of a community that are underserved by it is a recognition of that. And I think that when we take a look at those symbols, it tells us who we are as a city. It is my hope that next year, you take aside one month dedicated towards the quality of life indicators. It is my hope that we have a quality of life indicators report every year, not once every four years. It is my hope that we can evaluate the current social state of our city because so much of the time, I believe, is spent looking continually at zoning ordinances, variances, development, high-rise buildings. And I said, "My God, it's, there's a whole other side to this community other than development." And those are my party words for this year, that it is my hope that this city take on a proper allocated time to look at the social issues that are so important, that goodwill should not simply be left for the Christmas holiday season and the Hanukkah season. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, Margaret Hammond, followed by Ruth Demersian.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and city staff. My name is Margaret Hammond. I'm kind of on a different tack this evening. One of the things I want to bring up, in case many of you that had the opportunity and didn't take it, to go up to the Casa Adobe during the luminaries. It was a wonderful, really festive, traditional event at a building that is owned by all of us in Glendale. And we ought to be very happy to have it. It is an exceptional historical building, I believe one of the first in California it was declared. And we had pinatas on Saturday for the children, we had folklorico dancers, we had Hoover High School come. It was really a fun event and our 135th birthday was celebrated on Saturday afternoon. Many people came and went and enjoyed it, were absolutely astounded. Some of them were from the Hoover tour of homes and just happened to come along and do the tour of the house, which I was there. Gladys Wymore was our spark plug, as usual, on this whole event. I was supposed to be chairman, but I think I kind of fell back on Pearl Gladys and she took it on and kept the thing running. But it was wonderful and we do have to thank Coco, who is a wonderful employee and very enthusiastic and helpful for the ladies of Glendale Beautiful that are the hostesses and so forth at the Adobe. The other thing is the Clean and Beautiful Group. We won an award from the La Crescent, La Canyada as Organization of the Year. We owe a lot of it, there are like 14 or 15 volunteers, but you know, we couldn't do it without the employees. Juan Gonzalez, Noreen, Sandra Rodriguez and, God love her, Sandy, who has left, retired and was our secretary. And of course, Sam Engel kind of keeps us all in line. They're a great group and they're very enthusiastic and very dedicated. They will go anywhere, try to do anything they can to keep our city clean and beautiful. They really feel strongly about the graffiti and the trashing and so forth of Glendale. So again, you know, and it was a lovely event, which as I said, Tom Miller, that was the last time I saw him, he sat at my table. Take a lesson, enjoy life while we can. The tree lighting was a great affair. I decided at the last minute to come and I really enjoyed it. And Tony, I said, "Well, who sits in the front seats? Who's the VPs?" And of course, I was answered by, "Well, take a seat if you want it, you're, you know, welcome." So I did and I sat there and it was great seeing all the people coming and going. It really was. And how many, and what a family event it was. And the tree lighting, I mean, it really was. It was terrific. There are lots of things to be grateful for in Glendale. And then, of course, I come around to my own area where the city has put in decorations in Adams Square and so forth and our Adams Hill Homeowner Group did up the hill, on the lamppost up the hill, all the way to LA. And since I've already said something to my buddy Steve over there on the way in, I was really angry because I had been trying to deal with getting out of, off my street to get here and taking one detour, another detour, another detour. And I never know where the detours are going to be, so then I get there and have to back up. Well, you know, old ladies backing up are a hazard, let's face it, you know. But, and as he says, "Well, it's only six more weeks." But I said, "But this is terrible. We have like four or five of the streets that we're able to use are dug up, are rerouted." The other thing that really is, makes me hugely angry, we have a great big huge truck which advertises Kia and it's parked on the streets in Adams Square. It sticks out and it causes a lot of trouble. Well, we've got all this extra traffic that's coming from LA, over Cypress and trying to cut down and around and whatever, and then this huge truck is stuck there in the middle of everything. And why can they do that? They wouldn't be able to do it up on Kenneth or Mountain or any of those streets, there are Glen Oaks either. There'd be hell to pay. Somebody would say, "What is that ugly monstrosity doing there?" And they would be action taken on it. And so I do feel that it's something that could be taken care of. But anyway, listen, have a good time, enjoy it and I hope the Christmas goes well and that the rose parade goes off and that we get a prize and it's fun. And again, it's another fun thing for the people of Glendale to enjoy. Thank you.
Thanks, Margaret. It'll go off rain or shine. I know I sat in the rain last year. Herbert Demersian, followed by Hasmik Demersian.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members and staff. I'm here to talk about my house on 3612 Lindavista Road and it's not the highway, it's road. We just recently received a gift from the city. It's the median, that's the issue we're going to talk about and we're not too happy about the gift, we'd like to give it back to you. When city attorneys knew that the median is not condition of this project, the city decided to release occupancy permit, but to pursue the median issue. As soon as we moved into the house, city came and placed temporary barricades preventing us from left turn movements in or out from or into our driveway. The house is completed, but the median issues are not over. So I'm here tonight to clarify some more issues with you about the median. Is it really necessary to punish us for something that is not true, something is that is not standard, unusual and odd? The imaginary danger of the street in regards to our driveway was brought up in DRB hearings. So I met person from the Traffic and Transportation. I asked the person if he's the one that does this kind of job, does he check on driveway safety issues? And his answer was yes. 11 o'clock that day, we were, we had an appointment and he looked up the street and down the street and he asked me, "Where are those people who are, you know, opposing this project?" I didn't answer and he said, "We don't normally comment on issues like this. You need to apply for plan check." Then he says, "But in between us, after record, I have no problem, I have no problem with location of the driveway." And he said, "Down the street, driveways, normally people are backing up to the street with zero sight vision." A few months later, this median issue came up from Traffic and Transportation, Mr. Tom Mitchell, way before plans were submitted to the city for plan check. It is unusual to comment on some things that are not in effect yet. Was Mr. Tom Mitchell ordered to spend time and conduct work on this issue? Who authorized this work? It's not standard, you know, this is truly fabricated issue. However, Mr. Tom Mitchell's calculation assessment to this driveway was that the cars are traveling 35 miles an hour. It takes seven seconds to make a left turn. We will need 380 feet sight vision. This sight vision is only 260 feet, only 260 feet. If cars traveling 24 miles per hour, this driveway will be okay, safe. Posted the speed limit on the street is 25 miles per hour. It's unusual, I mean, it's unjust to use 35 miles when posted sign is only 25. And using highway calculation without consideration of smaller street with driveway for a single family dwelling with minimum traffic under 1,000 cars per 24 hours. We also done traffic count ourselves. We have 30 miles an hour instead of 35. It is normal procedure for the city to control the traffic. Excessive speed is normally dangerous to begin with. So this calculation of Mr. Tom Mitchell should not take place or affect on my driveway. He indicated in his letter that 24 miles per hour with 260 feet of sight vision, seven seconds to make the left turn is okay. So basically, my driveway should be approved and it is approved in the standard plan check procedure. Looking at the homes on the street and other hillside homes, most of these homes have less than 260 feet sight vision. If this calculation applied to any of these homes, 80% or more of these homes would fail. Down the road, we have Bakingham Street, which has provided within a stop sign and the stop ahead sign that is for safety, it's fair. We used our driveway for three years without any accident. If this driveway was dangerous as it's presented, we should have lots of accidents. Since no accident have occurred, this driveway is safe. Now that the barrication is applied, preventing us from making a left turn, you, the city, apply danger to our street. My wife will continue this. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Hasmik Demersian. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilman, staff. I'm going to continue. Okay. Since no accident has occurred, the driveway is safe. Now the barrication is applied, preventing us from making a left turn, you, the city, apply danger to our street. No one have thought about pedestrian, bicyclers, joggers and no one have thought about where we make our U-turn. Mr. Mitchell said Pasadena Art Center, you make a U-turn. We need written permission from City of Glendale, 365 days a year and unlimited years to enter the college. The college is not yours and the doors are shut down for the holidays now. The cohesion remains the same. Where do we make our U-turn? You took the law-abiding citizens and make them do illegal turns, illegal maneuvering and dangerous street without thinking of the outcome. If I'm in danger, the commuters are in danger. What is our safety issue here? Is this a safety issue or punishment for the particular developer? Mrs. McKenzie, Vice President of Farroks Communities Homeowner Association, one time in the hearing, she said, "We want to make an example of them." So nobody, no other people built other places. She meant punishment. Now the city and the Farroks Community Association, united, are doing what she said. In our appeal hearing, when meeting subject was discussed, Mr. Scott Howard stopped the conversation and said, "The hearing is not for the median, the hearing is for the buildability of the house. Should it be built or not?" The median issue at the time of the plan check, the staff will comment on it if it's necessary. Our plans got approved and submitted with no comments from Traffic and Transportation. Therefore, the median issue is obsolete. The median does not provide safety in front of our house, but it provides danger. Lindavista and Figueroa intersection, they don't have sufficient sight vision per Tom Mitchell calculation, they need 380 feet sight vision. So I think that they need a median, but I think they need a four-way stop sign. All it needs is the city to put a stop sign, four-way stop sign at the Lindavista and Figueroa and it would turn that place peaceful and safe and justice for all. And I do have petition, I have almost 100 signatures here protesting. It says, "We Glendale residents living and or around Lindavista and Figueroa area, Glendale, California protest against installation of candlestick channeling and proposed median in front of 3612 Lindavista. We request the City of Glendale remove it immediately." And also, public, you guys should know, the city is proposing to put a median there on taxpayers' money and in order to do that, they have to widen the street and put retaining walls and that would cost a lot of money just to please some members of homeowners association. And it's a shame, you guys put 10 feet high post in the middle of street and facing just us, just for us, no left turn, one-way sign. It's a shame for City of Glendale. And Farroks Community, stop harassing us, stop invading our privacy and stop trespassing and stop taking pictures. And here are petitions. Can you please keep one for councilman?
That ends our communication. Without getting a debate, I will state that you've been here before on the same subject matter and just to repeat it, what I said before. I remember very clearly that median was a requirement, a mitigation that you willingly accepted to build your dream house there. It was, oh yes. Your time is done. It was in there. I'm an engineer, I remember that distinctly because I asked staff about it. End of debate, end of, there's not going to be a debate. You've been here before on this same subject.
It was a condition, you wouldn't release our.
Please, what is next, please?
At 7 is adoption of ordinances. At 7A is ordinance amending sections 16.08.180 and 30.70.020 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 relating to definitions of quote "lot" offered on December 12, 2006 by council member Yusefian.
Yusefian.
So moved.
Is our second?
Second.
Roll call.
Council members Manukin, Najarian.
Yes.
Wintaro.
Yeah.
Yusefian.
Hi.
Mayor Weaver.
Hi, next please.
At 7B is ordinance providing for certain officers, subordinate officers, assistants, deputies, clerks and employees of the City of Glendale and for their compensation, GCEA and hourly. and hourly classifications offered on December twelfth, two thousand and six by Councilmember Manukian.
Mr. Manukian, so I'm sick, would somebody else like to make a motion?
So moved.
Second. Moving to second, roll call.
Councilmembers Manukian, Najarian--
Yes.
Quintero--
Yes.
Yusefian--
Hi.
Mayor Weaver--
Hi, next, please.
At seven C is ordinance providing for certain officers, subordinate officers, assistants, deputies, clerks, and employees of the City of Glendale, and for their compensation, GMA, offered on December twelfth, two thousand and six by Councilmember Manukian.
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Manukian, Najarian--
Yes.
Quintero--
Yes.
Yusefian--
Hi.
Mayor Weaver--
Hi, next, please.
It is action items, City Manager, regarding consideration of a resolution supporting City of Santa Clarita and their efforts to limit mining in Soladad Canyon to historic levels, preventing the Cemex Mine Corporation from mining ninety-six million tons as currently permitted by the Bureau of Land Management. Eight-eight-one is resolution supporting the City of Santa Clarita's efforts to maintain local control.
Mr. Starburg.
Yes, let me go to Elaine Aguilar for this report. This is in follow-up to a request from Mr. Najarian that we bring the matter to you with Santa Clarita's request that we support them in their efforts to limit and control the extent of this mining operation.
Which is, in essence, where the federal government has stepped in and superseded local authority.
Correct. The report's basically been given, but the City of Santa Clarita is requesting assistance from other local jurisdictions regarding an issue of local control and circumvention of local control. In Santa Clarita's situation, there's a Cemex Corporation, which is a global producer of cement and ready-mixed products, has received a permit from the Federal Bureau of Land Management to mine sixty-nine million tons of sand and gravel within a five-mile radius of the people who live in Santa Clarita, schools, and parks. The environmental traffic studies all indicate that the mining operation is going to severely impact the area. Santa Clarita's been very clear that they're not opposed to the mining operation, they would just like some mitigation measures to be implemented to make this project a little less damaging to the environment and to the residents who live in Santa Clarita. And a draft resolution is attached to your council report, and basically, the resolution indicates that local jurisdictions are concerned about the circumvention of local control and the precedence that may be set, allowing other federal agencies and multinational corporations to circumvent local autonomy in cities. As I mentioned previously, the resolution is attached. If the council is in favor of authorizing the resolution, it will be sent to the City of Santa Clarita.
I do have one speaker on this, Mr. Quintero.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that people understand that this does not directly affect the City of Glendale. Yet, we are going to be discussing this, as we have many times in the past, in the six-plus years that I've been a council member. We've had numerous proclamations and so forth, discussions about things that don't, quote, "directly affect" the City of Glendale.
Yes, and in the future, though, it could directly affect us if the federal agency tried to assert local control, which we would have a problem with. So it's a fellow city suffering from a problem that we could potentially have in the future.
Well, it's just that when we have people who are constantly complaining and saying that we're getting involved in things that don't really affect us--
I'm the first one out there to say that.
I don't mean you, but I mean lots of other--
But I do. This one is legitimately within our control someday. Mr. Najarian.
I was personally contacted by the mayor of Santa Clarita, Lorian West, who was very concerned. And in fact, the entire community and city of Santa Clarita is deeply concerned and troubled by what apparently overnight appeared to be a situation where there are going to be huge amounts of rock and gravel mined just outside their borders. And the issue here is whether they, as a city, could have any control over limiting and regulating the impact that it will have on the City of Santa Clarita, on their roadways, on their wildlife. And it's not just Santa Clarita. Those gravel trucks are gonna be coming down the Five Freeway, and where they're gonna end up, we don't know exactly. Could very well be coming through our back door here down the Five Freeway in Glendale. And it's simply, even though it involves a jurisdiction outside our borders, it's simply the right thing to do, and I am gonna stand up for the right thing to do and support the City of Santa Clarita in their efforts to obtain some control, some self-determination on their quality of life. And I would urge my colleagues, I think I have a supporter in Mr. Quintero, Mr. Weaver, I don't know how you are leaning, but--
Well, I work for the federal government, and I know what the federal government can do or not do.
And I'd like to add that the City of Santa Clarita has been very supportive of the City of Glendale in many other issues that did not directly affect the City of Santa Clarita. I think it's through this sort of support of our fellow cities that the smaller cities, and even though we're two-hundred-and-ten-thousand compared to the City of LA and City of Long Beach, we are a smaller city, can stick together and try and get control and maintain our quality of life.
Thank you. We do have one speaker.
I have one question.
Mr. Yusefian.
Maybe Elaine can answer. Is this quarry going to be in City of Santa Clarita? Because it says mine is in Soladad Canyon area in Santa Clarita Valley, but is it in Santa Clarita city, City of Santa Clarita?
My understanding is that it is within their--
Jurisdiction, actually--
That it is within their boundary.
No, actually, it's not.
More like a sphere of influence.
It's not. However, the City of Santa Clarita, in an attempt to obtain some control, purchased the land. They own the land where the mine is operating. However, it's an issue of mining rights issued by the Bureau of Land Management, and they would like, through their attempt to purchase the land, place some reasonable monitoring on the big gravel trucks that are lumbering up out of the mine onto their city streets.
Okay, I have one speaker. Herbert Milano, two minutes. Herbert? Okay, we have no speakers. Okay, is there any further discussion? Personally, I think the federal government oversteps themselves, and I worked for them for thirty-seven years. Anybody wanna make a motion?
I'll second it. And my comment, my other comment is that this is really an environmental issue.
It's a nightmare.
Absolutely. I mean, there is just way too much of a population surrounding this proposed mine, and it's certainly not gonna be limited by any means. It's gonna be a major operations. This Cemex is a huge international corporation, a global producer of cement and ready-mixed concrete products. So I'm sure there's lots of other places that they could mine and have the same scale operation. I don't think they need to do it in this location.
And then no further discussion, roll call.
Councilmembers Manukian, Najarian--
Yes.
Quintero--
Yes.
Yusefian--
Upstain.
Mayor Weaver--
Hi. Okay, next, please.
At eight B is Director of Administrative Services regarding Comprehensive Annual Financial Report of the City of Glendale for June thirty, two thousand and six. At B one is Motion Accepting Report.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, there is a card in. Mr. Barry Allen, two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, Staff, Public. I'm Barry Allen with Vanguard. The, I asked the City Attorney's Office for a copy of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, and I got something back that says the report's statements relating to fiscal year two thousand and six have not yet been finished. And I looked online, and I couldn't find the document that you're voting to accept. I looked on your agenda, and I didn't see anything in the packet, which has this, maybe I missed it. If I did, I certainly apologize. If I didn't miss it, you're being asked to accept a document that you don't even have. You have it. The public hasn't seen it. I assume each council member has one? Okay. It wasn't with your, on the agenda, it wasn't online, and the, according to the City Attorney's Office, it wasn't done yet. So if that's the case, I certainly do apologize, and I will look-- No, it's on the, I mean, online to clip the, all that was online was the motion. The document itself was not online, and I--
Wait, 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 wait till he's done.
So the question is, if the document is online, fine, I will get it, and I assume that if it is, each of you has, have had the opportunity to read it, and you're going to be voting on the acceptance of a document that you're well familiar with. Thank you, I'm Barry Allen.
And then, Mr. Allers, in your first time as Administrative Services, would you like to come to the podium and respond?
First time as a defendant.
That's gonna be a look at it.
Last week, you, all the council members, as well as the, Mr. Starburg and Mr. Howard, received the Comprehensive Annual Report for two thousand and six, and the document is actually on the city's website and under the Finance section of the website as we speak.
Ron, do you recall when it was posted?
The CAFR was actually posted today, the GRA CAFR, the GRA Financial Statement was probably posted either yesterday or last Friday. So, but this CAFR was posted--
Thank you very much.
Ron, I have a question of Ron.
Sir.
I mean, just for general information, this is a document that was prepared by our Finance Staff.
Yes, that is correct.
And after you prepared it, it was reviewed by an outside agency.
Our external auditors, that is correct.
Their auditors, and they're trained in auditing and--
They are cert--
--negating and uncovering any irregularities, both factual or in reporting and procedural.
That is correct.
And what was their conclusion?
Their certified public accountants rendered a clean opinion or an unqualified opinion that the financial statements are free of any material in this statement.
Mr. Mayor, we should clarify, though. As indicated in the Independent Auditor's Report, which is included within the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, the auditors expressed an opinion on their review of the financial records that are prepared by the Finance Department. The additional sections of what we call the CAFR, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, is really a compilation of far more statistical and financial information than you would normally receive in the audit financial report. And so what they do note here is that with respect to the financial statements, they're expressing an opinion. With respect to some of the supplemental information that is included in the CAFR that is there to supplement the financial reports, they don't, they don't express an opinion on that information. That's provided by the Finance Department to just highlight, supplement, and provide additional information on top of the financial statements.
How about our--
Mr. Darrell.
Audit Committee? Does our Audit Committee also take a look at it?
Yes, the Audit Committee will take a look at this report at their next meeting in January.
The internal or external? Internal.
Internal, yeah.
Right.
And we should note that, as expressed in--
Yeah, Citizens Committee is the point I wanted to make.
Correct.
Yes. We should note, as noted in the Independent Auditor's Report, we receive what is called a clean opinion, which means no exceptions taken to the financial records.
Thank you very much, Mr. Allers. No more discussion, roll call.
Councilmembers Manukian, Najarian--
Yes.
Quintero--
Yes.
Yusefian--
Hi.
Mayor Weaver--
Hi, next, please.
At eight C is Director of Water and Power regarding design and construction of a grid-connected photovoltaic system at the Glendale Community College parking structure. At eight C one is resolution authorizing City Manager to execute a contract with Chevron Energy Systems and authorizing reimbursement for Glendale Community College contractors to integrate necessary structural elements support system.
Mr. Yusefian.
Move eight C one.
Second, but I would, I would like to have GW--
I have a card, too.
I'd like to have GWP let the public know what we're doing here, because I thought this is a great--
Joe Flores, why don't you give an overview of this project?
Then we'll hear from Nancy Kent.
Mayor Weaver, members of the council, Mr. Starburg and staff, my name is Joe Flores. I'm a business account representative with Glendale Water and Power. I'm also the project manager for the photovoltaic project for Glendale Water and Power with Glendale Community College. This started out as a partnership that was introduced to council in May of two thousand and four, and what this partnership will do is allow Glendale Water and Power to incorporate creating electricity from the sun as part of the new parking structure that's being constructed right now at Glendale Community College. The funds that are going to be used to purchase, to construct this photovoltaic system is primarily coming from our public benefit funds, which is a state mandated charge that we collect, and two-point-two million dollars will be allocated to do that. Part of that, part of those funds are to be used to invest in renewable energy, which solar energy is. The remaining funds, seven-hundred thousand, will be coming from the operational account from Glendale Water and Power, so the total project will be about two-point-nine million dollars. We expect this parking structure to be completed somewhere around May of two thousand and seven. We will then proceed with constructing the photovoltaic system on the top two floors of the parking structure, which is a four-level and six-level parking structure side by side. We anticipate that we will be done with that approximately July or August of two thousand and seven, in time for the fall semester, starting in September, so that all of the parking structure can be utilized by the students.
I'm curious, how many, fifteen kilowatt solar photovoltaic?
The--
Yeah, so fifteen thousand--
The system is going to be approximately two-hundred-and-sixty kilowatts. That is approximately enough energy to provide power for hundred to one-hundred-twenty-five homes. The, all the power that's going to be generated will be fed directly into the Glendale Community College. That's part of the agreement, so that Glendale Community College, who has adopted certain standards in their new construction, can claim that they are using renewable energy to provide energy to their college. It will also be providing, provide shade to all of the students who will be parking on the top levels of those parking, of the parking structure. They are gonna be leasing that space to us for the next fifty years at one dollar a year, and in return, we will own, operate, maintain the system for the life of that system.
Not a bad deal.
Not a bad deal at all.
Najarian.
Mr. Flores, what, it's a lot of kilowatts, and the pricing is per smaller, smaller units of energy, but can you tell us what this energy over its, the lifespan of this project, what would be the average cost of each unit of electricity compared to other sources, let's say, from our, our power plant? How does it compare?
We estimate that the power is gonna cost approximately eleven cents per watt. Other sources of energy that we procure may be anywhere from four to six cents per watt, just for the energy side of it. However, some of the benefits of solar is that you are creating it at the source on which it's going to be used. So other sources that we may have may be either out of state or long distances away where you have to transmit the power over long distances. You have losses and so forth, and other charges, other costs related to those, that transportation. Here, you are actually generating the power at its source and delivering it directly to the end user. So the other benefit that you're getting from solar is that the cost of electricity is significantly higher during the summer months, when it's warmest, when people are using air conditioners and other large, other large mechanical uses. And that's exactly when the photovoltaic system is producing the most amount of energy. And so there is added benefit when you're producing at the time when it's most needed.
And would you recommend that the council consider other projects, other solar projects when the opportunity arises? Is it something that's--
It will work on our garages.
I would if the circumstances are correct, because, because photovoltaic is usually either placed on a building or some other structure, and there tends to be weight issues which then add to the cost of reinforcing the structure that's gonna be housing that photovoltaic system. So under the correct conditions, photovoltaic systems tend to be at the higher end of the cost for renewable energy, but if the conditions are correct, it can be a medium investment, I would say, versus some of the other renewables that may be available.
Mr. Yusefian, Mr. Starburg.
Well, I just, I just wanted to note, in large part, this is, this is a great deal of what we call a demonstration project, showing the effective use of photovoltaic by today's standards, relatively expensive, and you'd have to justify trying to generate a great deal of energy in this fashion. But in this situation, with the benefit to the college of having a roof now on the third But in this situation, with the benefit of the college of having a roof now on the third deck of their structure, which will make it more usable by students, by direct connection to a large institution that uses a lot of energy, then this is one of those that is a demonstration project, and with the use of our PBC funds to help underwrite it, makes some sense. I don't think you'd see us recommending that you use this in, in every case where a parking structure is being built, but in unique circumstances, it can make some sense. I think we need to view this as, as a demonstration project, and the use of photovoltaic for a, what is otherwise a very large energy user.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Yusefian.
You have, we have a lease with the college for 50 years. What is the life expectancy of the photovoltaic cells?
The warranty on a photovoltaic cell is 20 years. There are several installations that have been done by other utilities, such as SMUD, which are now over 30 years. So, we don't know the answer to that question yet.
Has ever been a system that's been up for 50 years?
Yes, that, so we don't know. It's, they're still living, so we don't know that yet.
And, so if we do have to replace them in, let's say, 25 years or 30 years, I'm assuming by then, hopefully, there'll be a better system, more efficient, it can create more, and so on and so forth. So, okay.
Okay.
Answered my question.
Nancy Kent, two minutes. Thank you for the presentation.
My name is Nancy Kent. I'm a resident of Glendale, and I would like to thank you for the votes that you've already taken to create this solar energy facility, and I do hope that we see more installations like this in the city in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also want to say, since the Chevron Energy Systems is actually doing the installation, I would love to compute someday tanker full of petroleum, how many tankerfuls of petroleum this photovoltaic cell park replaces? When you think about it, I think, think about 30.
Or coal, or tons of carbon.
Or coal, whatever. But since it's Chevron, it's Chevron Oil, this is their subsidiary, it'd be interesting, you know, how many tankers didn't have to sail because of this particular installation. It's great, I'm very happy we're finishing up.
Mr. Najarian.
I know, being supporter of GCC, I would just like to put a good word in to the folks at the college for participating in this project with us.
Aye. Ditto that. Roll call, please.
Council members, Menuchyan, Najarian-
Yes.
Quintero-
Yes.
Yusefian-
Aye.
Mayor Weaver-
Aye. Next, please.
At 8D is City Attorney regarding amendments to city's conflict of interest code. At 8D1, motion approving amendment conflict of interest code.
Okay. Mr. Yusefian.
I have a couple of questions, and I'll move the motion. I have talked to the city attorney about this item already, and the city manager, but partly have an answer for one and not to the other one. First of all, what happened to the FPPC form that we were going to deal with anytime we ask money on behest? I thought you were going to put something out.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, councilmember Yusefian, I believe you're speaking of the requirement where if, at the behest of a council member, an elected official, charitable contributions in excess of $5,000 are made, we have formally requested an opinion letter from the FPPC on what that phrase means under certain differing scenarios. We know what the phrase means because it's defined under FPPC guidelines, but it's, the way it's defined in connection with campaign contributions, it's not clear how it would apply in multiple situations. And in order to properly protect the council, we've actually formally sought a, an info, we're calling, what they call, an informal advice letter. We do have a form, Mr. Garcia has already prepared, ready to go to the city clerk. That's only on, that's on hold until we receive the opinion, so we know what you have to report and what you don't. But the form is already ready to go.
Okay.
Just waiting to get an informal advice opinion from the FPPC.
Okay, so I'm not in trouble by not filling the form? Okay. Second thing is, I just want to make sure, you know, you never know. The second thing is, while this deals with the conflict of interest issues, a while back during another election, I had asked to bring back an issue that dealt with council members taking money in the morning and working on an item in the afternoon, and I wanted the same type of regulation that basically is required of the planning commissioners, which is 30 days prior to a vote, and 30 days after a vote, you will not be able to receive any campaign contributions. And that was going to come to us, so when is that coming back to us?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, that was going to be included as part of a larger campaign reform package that is going to be coming to you in April. However, if the, if it's the desire of the council to have that come forward as a separate piece, either in January or February, we could certainly do that, but that would, the original plan, when you made the request, and I do recall it because it's on my, on my work program, is to include that as part of an overall campaign finance reform package.
Okay. And with that, I'll move 8D1, second.
Okay. Okay, then I have a speaker card.
Let me go before. And I'd just like to point out that it's a little bit confusing. When you look at a city councilman's Form 700 disclosure of economic interests, the categories that councilmen have to report are much broader than the categories, disclosure categories, that some of our commissions have. It is very likely that, and we've heard before, that someone on a particular commission indicates they have no reportable interests. And that has to be taken in context of the disclosure categories in which they're required to report, which is much different than a, a city councilman, which has to report basically the broadest, the broadest range of disclosure categories. So it's a little bit confusing, and you're not really comparing apples to apples when you look at a commissioner's Form 700, and they say, "No reportable interest," but you know darn well, they've got a house, you know, they've got a house on Glen Oaks, and a business on brand, et cetera. So, it, before anyone jumps to any conclusions, you need to take a look at this, and I've tried to explain this before when the issue came up, but it really is a wide matrix of disclosure categories that you have to go through and get a true understanding of what each commission and commissioner must report.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, there's a quick follow-up to the speakers is coming up. I think Councilmember Najarian's point is well taken. This, what you have before you, and Mike Grant really needs to be singled out here for the amount of work he does with different city staff, this is a biannual requirement of state law, that when you adopt a local conflict of interest code, which we have many years ago, we have to come to you with new positions, whether it be a commissioner or city staff, that may have responsibilities or duties that are covered and should be covered under a conflict of interest code. As a result, we have created our own categories based upon their job duties. That's what you're talking about, as opposed to the requirements where a city council member, a city attorney, a city manager, or planning commissioners have to, under 87100 of the government code, report every gift or every economic interest that they have that somebody either is likely to, or actually does business in Glendale, or owns property, where you have property in Glendale, as opposed to those more narrower categories that really reflect the duties and responsibilities of either members of boards and commissions or employees. And Mr. Grant is certainly here to provide more details on the work that he's done to update this code today, should you want to, should you want that additional information.
Should we want it. Mr. Allen, two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council staff. I'm Barry Allen. I'd like to answer Mr. Yusefian's question, and according to the FPPC, you're already in violation, whether there was a form or not. And according to the, their records, you'll find that under Section 82015, B2B1113. So that it, it lays it out, explains it, and they have told us to just go ahead and file a complaint, and they'll be happy. But we haven't done that yet. The other issue that I want to talk about, and more importantly, and I know that you've all read the 94 pages of the information required for commissioners and staff and what have you, but in reviewing it, just a couple of issues, for instance, on the Transportation and Parking Commission, you can have a parking lot, you can build parking lots, parking structures, you can do all those things, you're not prohibited. Isn't that great? And I don't, was there, was there a public hearing? Did we have public input on putting this together, or was it just something that was quickly drafted? Now, last week, or I think we gave a contract to someone who was going to be working as a contract software or, or computer operator, database manager. And under the Information Services, the, your, a person who is in charge of that, I think Ms. Vickham, she could actually own a company that provides contract workers, because this does not prevent or prohibit someone from owning that. So I think it was kind of a quick thing to do, and of course, you've all spotted that already, you don't need me to tell you. So go ahead and vote on it, and then we'll have the issues in the future when someone doesn't comply. Thank you.
Mr. Yusefian.
My understanding of that section was that while she can have a company that has contract workers, she can't hire them to work for her in the city. Am I correct?
I will have to turn to Mr. Grant, because this, you're getting into the actual specific appendices that deal with exactly what they have to report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, Mr. Starburn and staff. Again, this doesn't prevent it, what this is, is these are disclosure categories, so again, these are the type of things that, you know, they help, help the department head or the commissions and board members, the areas that they need to think about disclosing. It's not a prohibition.
So in this scenario, or, or the previous scenario, I'm a parking commissioner. I own four parking lots. Do I have to disclose that? Mr. Allen is saying that you don't have to.
Depends where they're located, I think.
Depends where they're located.
Depends where it's located, and, and the matter that's at issue, too.
Or if you, how they're used, if it's used for towing, you tow your vehicles to that lot. That has to be disclosed, so there's-
Actually, trying to pull that one up now, so we can look at that as an example. And likewise, Mr. Allen's comments, we'll certainly go back and take a look, and if it appears that one of the disclosure categories are out of whack, but Mr. Grant, as, as he reviewed them, went from, to each department and asked them for a list of, any new employees, changed job responsibilities and the like, and if there's something in there that needs to be added, we'll certainly bring it back to you and add it. But I, knowing the amount of time he's spent on this, I think it's probably, pretty well covered.
And one other thing, Mr. Grant-
Actually, TPC is something we did look at, in, in particular.
Next time you do the, the commissions, you have, like, civil service, you have one page, four lines, and then you have another page for commission on the status of woman, and another page for advisory. It's, it's much easier to go through them quicker when you have something like this, which you have basically listed a bunch of them, and just list them out, so you don't have to go-
That makes it helpful, yes.
Yeah, much easier. Because if somebody's looking, instead of going through page after page, they could look, and there it says, Art and Culture Commission 123, and Audit Committee 12345678910, you know, it's just one after another, one after another, so it's a little bit easier.
Okay. Mr. Najarian.
And this is a continual work in progress.
That is correct.
Right, Mr. Grant? If something comes up next month-
Absolutely.
-that you were unaware of, that a particular department had raises to you, you're free to come back through the proper channels and bring this before-
Absolutely.
-with, with a recommendation.
We can amend it, we can amend it at any time. By state law, we're required to do it every two years to look at it, by state law, but we can do it any time in between.
Okay. And citizens could also contact you if they feel that there's a particular disclosure category that's necessary.
Correct.
Thank you.
In fact, just, I did find Appendix B for the TPC, and it does specifically under sub-paragraph three, note that disclosure category is real property in a commercial zone, which has been in whole or part under consideration by the commission for a municipal parking lot, because the TPC doesn't regulate private parking lots.
Okay. Thank you. Any more questions? If not, roll call.
Council members, Menuchyan, Najarian-
Yes.
Quintero-
Yes.
Yusefian-
Aye.
Mayor Weaver.
Aye. What is next, please?
9A1 is hearings, and at 9A1 is Director of Development Services regarding confirmation of the resolution of intention to levy and collect assessments in Adams Square Business Improvement District for the calendar year 2007, and extend the term of management agreement. And 9A1 is resolution confirming the intention to levy and collect assessments within Adams Square Business Improvement District during 2007. And at 9A2, motion extending the terms of the management agreement with Adams Square Merchant Association for the calendar year 2007.
Just for the knowledge, this is a hearing, and I have no cards on this hearings. Whenever you want, I'll open the hearing and close it.
You want to open and close?
Okay. I'd be glad to open the hearing. I am happy to close the hearing.
I'll move 9A1, second.
Roll call.
Council members, Menuchyan, Najarian-
Yes.
Quintero-
Yes.
Yusefian-
Aye.
Mayor Weaver.
Aye.
9A2, second. Roll call.
Yes, please.
Council members, Menuchyan, Najarian-
Yes.
Quintero-
Yes.
Yusefian-
Aye.
Mayor Weaver.
Aye, and that concludes the last item of 2006.
No. We have new business.
Oh, we have, oh, new business, oh goodness. One more item. Mr. Quintero.
I move that the city attorney be and hereby is authorized to enter into a retainer agreement with the law firm of Gasky Dillon Balance LLP, Mark Dillon, and Morrison Forster LLP, Michael Ziski, to assist the city attorney in representing the interests of the city in the legal action titled Conquest Student Housing LLC at All versus City of Glendale, case number BS106394, and incur all necessary expenses in the matter. The retainer agreement shall, in addition to other provisions, contain a fee cap for handling the matter.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Council members, Menuchyan, Najarian-
Yes.
Quintero-
Yes.
Yusefian-
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the city manager is hereby authorized to submit to the county of Los Angeles a request to remove tax-defalted properties from the list of properties which have been noticed for sale in the city of Glendale, including the payment of the fee. Therefore, the, the list of properties included those properties more particularly described as assessor's parcel numbers 5654-028-020, 5654-019-037, 5654-025-019, and 5654-028-020. Further, should it be required by the county or the properties not to be redeemed by the owner or owners, the city manager authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to preparation of securing title to the properties in the name of the city of Glendale.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Council members, Menuchyan-
Council members, Menuchyan, Najarian-
Yes.
Quintero-
Yes.
Yusefian-
Aye.
Mayor Weaver.
Aye, and that is the last action item issued.
Well, let's adjourn the meeting in honor of Nicholas Sandbacher, who was killed in Iraq.
And a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Same here.